Mr. Westen?
Here.
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 All right, we have a quorum. Next item is a acceptance of the agenda, any additions or corrections? Hearing any, we'll move forward with the agenda as published. Next item is approval of the minutes, and this is from the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, any additions or corrections?
Move for approval.
Second. Roll call? Aye.
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 I'm staying.
Aye. All right, the minutes are approved. Next item is public comments for any item that is not on the agenda tonight under public hearings. Otherwise, we'll have you hold your comments so that we can take those items in context. So the only two items that are not part of the public hearing tonight are items six and seven. That's the Marriott at Town Madison and the master sign plan for Town Madison. If you have comments with, for either one of those items, now is your time to speak. Otherwise, we'll ask you for the other items to hold your comments, and we'll take public hearings with each one of those items as we go through them. Or if you have any other comments, we'll take those at this time. All right, seeing that there are none, we'll move forward with the opening of the public hearing. First item is request annex one, property of point six one acre lot, zone, and zone the property to R one A upon annexation. And this is recommendation to city council for annexation. Location eleven, two sixteen Cardinal Drive. Is the applicant here in which to address the commission? All right, seeing that there are no one to speak, Johnny?
This property is in Morris Estate subdivision. We currently have fifty-nine lots in this subdivision that are in the city. This is the best way to tell. The ones in white are in the county, the ones that are in yellow are in the city. So it's one of those where they're coming in individually. This is a single family, this is a lot, just one single family detached dwelling. It's a twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-five square foot lot, so it's more than meets the minimum lot size for R one A. And it is consistent with policy seven of the growth plan, and we recommend approval.
All right.
And we recommend the zoning to R one A.
All right, thank you. Just want to open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission? We'll need two motions, Johnny, do you have both motions? You can bring up on the screen. It's on the screen, we've got it up on the screen for you, so we'll need two motions. First motion. Roll call? Aye.
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 Aye. Second. Roll call? Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Central Park subdivision for a final plat for fifty-six lots on eight point six four acres, south of Royal Drive, west of Sullivan Street. Is the applicant here in which to address the commission?
Good evening, I'm Houston Matthews with Kroy Engineering, representing the applicant. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Johnny?
This property is on Royal Drive, just a little bit west of Sullivan Street. And this is a final plat for fifty-six lots. And it has, it's for a single family attached dwellings. It has groupings of ten units in a building, and they'll be fronting a private street that was built to city specs. They have on-site parking for residents, they have off-site parking for guests, or off the lots. When I say off-site, it's off the lots. They have two common areas, one in front for, mainly for open space, the one in the rear is for open space and detention. The preliminary plat was approved in March of two thousand twenty-one. One of the main things that came about that made this possible now is that the federal, FEMA, approved a LOMAR, which is letter of map revision based on feel. Basically, they study it, they say that if, you know, the feel is correct, so they take a portion of it out of the flood zone. And this allowed the fourteen lots that are towards the cul-de-sac, fourteen of those lots near the cul-de-sac to be taken out of the flood zone. None of the individual lots are in the flood zone at this time. So we recommend approval with these contingencies. This is the planning contingencies. That is a note that is carried over from the preliminary. It is more of an engineering than a planning deal, and it just sets a finished floor based upon the level of how the new FEMA floodlines are, how, where they're going to raise the base, the finished floor and the base flood elevation at for the lots. Am I saying that right? I'm just wandering around up here or something. Then we have signatures, and then the engineering department has those four comments. They need your, your closure tape, I think we have that, I saw that come through. And the point of beginning, which is survey and term, is how you get there. It's how you get there from, you've got this big grid called a township, and it's got these cross, it's got these cross-sections, so to get to your property, it tells you how you get to your property from a point out here to start your legal description. So we need that on there. We need three that show the grading matches proposed construction plans, drawings to ensure minimum finished floors can be met. And then last, remove note seventeen, there's a public utility and drainage easement from the plat, show extent of what remains in easement on the plat. They had a lot of area that was formerly in the flood zone. When the LOMAR was approved, it's out of the flood zone, so those areas need to be taken out of the, before it's recorded, they need, it needs to be taken, the easement needs to be taken off the plat. There's really not an easement until it's recorded. So if they wait till it's recorded and take it off with it on there, they'll be coming to see you at city council for a vacation of easement, so it's best to do it now.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll open up for public comments. All right, seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve, subject to contingency.
Second. Roll call? Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Town Madison Phase Ten Certified Plat to reconfigure two commercial lots and one common area on seven point three eight acres, north of Stadium Way and west of Moonshot Drive. Is the applicant here in which to address the commission? Welcome.
Robbie Stewart with Mullins, here representing the owner, and gladly ask any questions I might have.
All right, thank you. Johnny?
This property is located, of course, in Town Madison subdivision, and this property is connected to the Marriott Hotel, because if we go over here, the property to the, to your right and to the east is where the Marriott is going to be. If you remember the hub that we did, was it last month or the month before? It, a little property in the middle is a retention pond. If you go back here, you can see the water in it, and the property on the west side of that is the hub. This plat went through planning commission in April. And I have, we were talking about it over there, I got most of your signatures on it, and it was almost ready to be recorded. But when these two uses came in, the drainage on both sides and how they fit into that detention pond was causing those side yards to move just a little bit. It wasn't a tremendous deal. Sometimes if it's just a little, just a barely a little wiggle, we'll come back and tell you that, you know, and a lot of times it goes ahead, gets recorded. But this is a little bit more. The side yard on the, the, next to the property to the west, the hub, it has to be moved over because a part of that hub is sticking over in that easement and then where that detention pond is. There is a little gap you see up near I five sixty-five, they cut that out for a bit, there's an existing billboard there, so that ownership is going to go to, to who owns the billboard, or it's not going to be the Marriott. So it was enough that didn't feel comfortable just, just sending it on for recording without you seeing it again, but that's what they're doing, it's just a little rearrangement to make this fit the two developments that are coming. So we would recommend approval. Again, this, the certified plat needs to match the boundaries of the Marriott and the hub, and we need signatures. And engineering overall, Town Madison stormwater drainage design included modifications to site plan is subject to engineering review, and that too will factor into what these, these side yard property lines ultimately look like.
All right, open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission? Roll call? Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Heritage Plantation Phase Ten Certified Plat for two commercial lots on two point oh six acres located west of County Line Road and north of Waterson Way. Is the applicant here in which to address the commission?
My name is Samantha Kozlowski, I'm here with Eight Fourteen Services LLC. We are the applicant and the developer for this project. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Johnny?
This property again, it sits at the intersection of Waterson Way and County Line Road. This is on B two, and this may be familiar to you because, oh, I thought I put the slide in there, but it's on your report. Couple of months ago, this is where the childcare center, you approved that for this property. That childcare center will be on the northernmost lot. The southernmost lot, which will have an area of point eight seven acres, will be divided into another property and can be sold or conveyed to someone for future development. And that's basically what's going on here, just to, just divide it into two, two lots. We recommend approval, and the only contingencies are signatures, we have most of those, if not all of those, so we recommend approval. Go ahead, if you want to go ahead and make it a contingency, you can, but we really haven't.
All right, thank you. At this point, we'll open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve. How's access on lot three A getting, is it, is it going to go right out on County Line Road?
The southern lot?
Yeah.
Access to Waterson Way?
It would, you may not be able to see it.
The way that thing's drawn, it looks like it left a little hook to get out on County Line Road.
No, no, we had a lot of discussion on that, no County Line Road, no. They, they do have ingress route, I believe, the other lot, and they can get up to the drive there to the north, but their main access would be Waterson Way.
Move to approve, subject to contingency.
Second.
Roll call? Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Next item is Town Madison Phase Eleven Certified Plat for two tracks on five point five seven acres, north of Moonshot Drive and west of Zert Road. Is the applicant here in which to address the commission? Good? All right, Johnny?
This is also a Town Madison, and it's front's Moonshot Drive, and it's on UC. Really, the only thing happening here is track U is being split out of that bigger track to I. And so that would be the smallest lot with one point one two acres. And I really, I don't have any background information on why, but I'm assuming something's going to be developing there, developing there soon. And we recommend approval with the following signature.
All right, at this point, we'll open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve. Subject to contingencies, contingencies, sorry.
Roll call? Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries. At this point, the public hearing is closed, and we'll move on to site plans. Next item is the dual Marriott at Town Madison Site Plan for two hundred and eight room hotel on four point seven seven acres located at two sixty Stadium Way. Applicant here in which to address the commission? All right, we're good? Johnny?
And we're right back where we started. We see the, we see the same slide we had earlier with the plat, and go over to the site plan. This was approved once before, in April two thousand twenty, you approved a dual Marriott for this site, and it was two hundred and twelve rooms. They've come back with a different design, it's redesigned due to COVID, and that's why they're back here. And now they have a two hundred and eight room site. It's a dual Marriott, which means Marriott Residence and Courtyard Hotel are both at this site, so that's, that's what that, it's forty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-six square foot feet building, five stories. They'll have two hundred and fifty on-site parking, they'll have, no, they have, they're required to have two fifty, they have two hundred and thirty-five on-site parking spaces, they have twelve on-street parking spaces. If you see where the red line is there, it's kind of to the bottom right, says, that says, and if you look at it, it's a future building, they're going to put forty-one parking spaces there, they're going to build it with, with this site plan, and three of those will be shared spaces for this site. And that's probably until the new zoning code's adopted, because when we have that zoning code, we're going to reduce the number of parking spaces for hotels, they're a little high, what we require, and it'd actually be compliant without the, the two or three extra. So we recommend approval with the following contingencies, and we're really just matching this up with a plat, that the boundaries of this and the plat match at the time everything gets signed off. That's old comment number two, I really, I really have that now, but it's basically, when you're looking at site plans, and you have two hundred and thirty-five spaces, and you have these notes over here, for some reason, the notes and the actual plan never actually, they never actually match. So you have to sit there, you know, at each parking space, and then look at the notes and try to figure out what goes with what. But anyway, so I just need those all to match up. Engineering, we need, have overall stormwater, this is the same note that you saw in the plat. The overall drainage for Town Madison is something that the engineering department still has under review and is working with the applicant. An off-street, an off-site agreement will be required to work in common area P. Show details of, there's two sixty-inch pipes that are to be parallel as part of the Marriott site plan, to be installed as part of the Marriott site plan, that needs to be put into these construction plans. And then their HDL for twenty-five years event, they need to provide that for their storm profiles, and the fire department needs their fire flow information put on the plat. This is the information, and the fire department gives it to them, they just need to put it on there as a note.
All right, comments from the commission?
I just wanted to ask a question about this, the parking, it said something about it would be shared, or it would be parking on the other part. Is it the same property owner for both of those pieces that we've looked at tonight?
It is now, yes.
Okay.
At some point, the Marriott owned their lot, but probably by that time, it won't matter because the code has changed, and it, they won't even need it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Johnny, before you go away, that comment about the common area P one about the work, is that because the driveway goes through the common area?
I'll have to, is that, I'll let you.
I mean, I noticed the driveway goes through, through the common area where the billboard's supposed to be, I assume that's, has something to do with them not owning that property, or...
That, that was, that since it's off-site, it would be a separate lot, was just so they'd have agreement to install the pipes through that.
Okay, so how does the ownership work then, since there appears that they're putting the driveway through the billboard site?
I don't think there is a driveway.
Paved, paved area.
Paved road through where the billboard is, so...
That, the agreement is to basically let them install that.
The road?
Well, the, the pipes and, and the road.
And the road, okay. Okay. Any other comments? Need motion?
Move to approve.
Roll call? Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries. Last item is master plans, Town Madison Master Sign Plan. Applicant? All right, we're good? Johnny going to present?
Okay, this is a, and you got the master plan in your packet, this is an amendment to that, and it is basically to, I'm going to go ahead and read the change, and then I'll, I'll try to explain it. Monument and free sign designs are not allowed in, in public utility and drainage easements. Your own council, you get a ton of these, taking, vacating easements so that people can do stuff in those areas. So this is, the, the language here is unless prior to sign permit agreement, approval, the property owners assign, sign an acknowledgement acceptable, in acceptable form to the planning director that any sign installed in an easement is subject to removal according to the city's code, the city code and the zoning ordinance. The planning director shall review and approve or modify the form and content of each acknowledgement prior to issuance of any signed permit. If owner refuses to sign such an acknowledgement, then the owner may apply for a vacation of easement. And we get a lot of those now. Vacation of easement, an easement is a property right. And when, if you, if you want to do something in that easement, it's not permitted, and most structures are not permitted in easements, then you have to fill out an application, and it's reviewed by planning and engineering and fire and public works and several agencies like Madison Utilities to ensure that there's nothing in that easement that they, that would prevent them from being able to vacate it. Vacate it means we're giving that property right back to them. It goes to council because the city council is the only entity that can convey property back, city property back to a private person. So actually, at the end of this, the person gets a quitclaim deed, and it's filed in the courthouse, just like, you know, a property deed. So that's a lot of work, and it's a lot of time, and sometimes, we don't mind something being in the easement, but with the vacation process, it's all or nothing. We either have to give the easement up, and then, then we don't have an easement for them to do what they want to do. With this permissive use agreement that I know Megan is working on, it's something that Madison Utilities has been doing for a while. They have an agreement that says, we're just going to let what you put here stay. Sometimes it gets put there by mistake, and, you know, and, and there's a, a big sign sitting in an easement, it's not really hurting anything, but it can't be in an easement. So if, if it was a, a utility easement, or not a utility easement, but a sanitary sewer easement for MU, they would work out an agreement. Basically, we're going to let your sign stay here until, unless we need this easement. Now, if we need this easement, your sign is going away. And that's basically what we're saying here, am I saying that correctly? That there are instances in Town Madison and, and other places where this is not an issue. And we already had one in Town Madison either last month or the month before that came to you, was a vacation of easement, to put a sign in front of, was it Outback? And so every, one of those along Zert Road's going to have to do the same thing. So we're looking for a way to allow those things to happen if they're not going to affect the function of the easement, to allow them to be there and do it as a permissive use agreement. The language in this, in the, in the master plan is being amended to match that with a permissive use agreement because the master plan says a sign cannot be in an easement. So that's what the amendment would be. And it makes it a little more flexible for everybody involved when we're, we're looking at these things.
All right, comments from the commission?
Megan, as part of putting that plan or process together, what is the, what are the steps to, if somebody wants to put something in easement, there is a sign there, I mean, there kind of needs to be some communication, I guess, to understand, back and forth between, you know, who owns the sign and, and whoever's wanting to put something there, because usually they spend a lot of money on the signs, so there's probably some time that would allot them to move their sign or whatever.
Yes, that's what the agreement will state, that the city will just abstain from exercising its rights until the owner has noticed and is able to move it, and then that will be at their cost. So, and then the approval for this, we'll just go through the normal sign permitting process, so it'll be a part of that, and planning will still review the location and all of that, and if they're willing to sign off on it, then they will, but if they recommend that the easement be vacated, all things considered, then we'll just go to the council like normal, and if the owner of the sign does not want that risk there, then they can just apply for a vacation of easement like normal.
So it'll be clearly communicated to them upfront?
Mm-hmm.
That if we decide, if the city decides to exercise that right, they will move that sign at their own cost.
That's in the agreement, yes.
And it's in perpetuity?
Yes.
There's no time limit necessarily, they have the right?
It's, yes, it's recorded in the real estate records.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
All right, any other comments?
Move to approve amendment to the sign master plan.
Roll call? Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries. That was the last item on the agenda. Thank you, everybody. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Well, how we got to where we are. In this case, I'm going to go all the way back to about two thousand and eight and tell you how two projects, the Target Center and this other one, Madison Hospital, come together and how it's made a significant impact in the quality of life of the city of Madison residents. So the story actually starts in two thousand and seven, when our mayoral team put together a game plan on five primary areas we'd work on if given the chance and elected mayor of the city of Madison. You know, it all comes down to roads, schools, creating more sales tax revenue, doing it by hiring an economic development specialist, and lastly, just being more open and accessible. So we won and we started the process of doing it. One of the first things that came about from that was the two thousand and eight, and I'll call it a battle.